I'm not ready for that yet.
Green.
All right. Good evening, it's 6:00 PM, January 27th, and I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals for this evening. First, I'd like to announce that this hearing is being televised live on local Mashpee TV. Next, if we could all rise and say the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, next I'd like to read a memo from the office of the selectmen. It's to the zoning board of appeals from Christine Willander, Assistant Administrator. Carbon copy to Deb Dammie, town clerk, and it stated, January 27th, reference appointments to the zoning board of appeals full member. Please be advised that on Monday, January 25th, 2016, the board of selectmen voted to appoint Scott Goldstein as a full member from an associate member of the zoning board of appeals. Board's happy to welcome Scott as a new full-time member.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Absent tonight is board member Ron Bond V. So, sitting on tonight's first hearing will be our four regular board members, as well as Jim Gould. Jim and Brad will alternate on every hearing. So, Jim, if you would read the first continued hearing, please.
171 Uncle Percy's Road. Owner Eileen B. Farrell requests a written finding.
I don't think you might turn your mic down.
Requests a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow the extension of two bedrooms on the second floor, an extension of the kitchen dining area on the first floor of a single-family dwelling on the property located in R3 zoning district. In parentheses, map 117 parcel 371, close parentheses, in Mashpee, Massachusetts. This, at the request of the board, this hearing is continued from January 13th, 2016.
Okay, and if you could read the next one, too. We'll vote them on separately, but...
Again, 171 Uncle Percy's Road. Owner Eileen B. Farrell requests a written finding under 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to determine if the extension of two bedrooms on the second floor, an extension of the kitchen dining area on the first floor of a single-family dwelling is set back at least 50 feet from any water or wetland as defined by Mass. General Laws, Chapter 131, Section 40, on the property located in R3 zoning district. In parentheses, map 117 parcel 371, close parentheses, Mashpee, Massachusetts. At the request of the board, this was continued from January 13th, 2016.
Okay. Hi.
How you doing?
Good, good.
I'm Jeff Reither with BSS Design. Sorry, I'm a little under the weather. I represent the applicant. Tom Bunker couldn't be here. He presented last time, on the 13th. And I think the main issue was boiled down to the septic system and what maybe the lack of referral from the board of health. It was better prepared to the owner, which I guess was circulated. And anyway, certainly if I'm wrong, but I think that the project itself was presented, and I didn't think there was any issues there, from what I heard from Tom. Came down to that pesky septic system. So, on the referrals, we did get a copy, and it talks about his responses, Glenn Harrington's responses were sent to the building department, and his permit was...
Tom. Got you. Thank you.
And the board of health has signed off on the building permit at this point, so hopefully there's no issues with the septic system. I believe at some point, if they were to sell this house, they would have to do some minor changes to the septic system to get it complied with. Right now, it just needs a riser on the heat pit, and maybe a tank has to be modified, but it's got an approval through its Title V inspection. And the reason for the inspection was to locate the system physically on the plan so they could go forward with the design, so... The system is here out in front. Sorry, check the mic.
Sure.
The septic system is here out in front with a septic tank to a distribution box and then a soil absorption system here. A small addition to the front and a large one off to the rear. And here is that nonconformance of 43 feet to the freshwater wetland behind the house.
Okay, the issues, though, were about the septic. That was the main issue.
Right, right. I think a lot should be taken care of by the board of health's comments.
Okay, well, let me see what we got here. Let's take a look. Let me start with fire department comments. And this is from the fire department dated Thursday, January 21st, regarding 171 Uncle Percy's. Mary Ann, per your request, I reviewed and submitted the plans... I reviewed thus submitted plans for 171 Uncle Percy's Road. The plans have not been marked with the placement locations for the smoke and CO detectors. The plans will need to be marked prior to fire department approval. Smoke and CO detectors. So, the plans have to have this stuff on there.
Well, can't we do that as part of the building permit?
Yeah.
We're not looking for...
Yeah. It's really not relevant to us.
Just a comment from that department. Okay. And let's see, I have one from board of health. Board of health comments. I forwarded a response letter to the building department that was sent to the owner in regard to the septic inspection that was done for the purpose, for the proposed addition. The two items identified in the inspection were the septic tank in the driveway and the leaching facility without access manholes. As a point of correction, there was nothing wrong with the distribution box, and the leaching facility was inspected by video camera and passed inspection. The owner has until transfer of property to correct the identified items. Board of health has signed off on the building permits. We have this one, though, yeah? Okay, I have another one dated... Excuse me, from the board of health. Dated Friday, the 15th, from Glenn Harrington to the zoning board, and it says, "Hi, Mary Ann, please see the attached letter that is our response to the owner. In my opinion, the septic system is not a concern because our regulation does not give us the right to enforcement of replacing the tank right now." Now, let's see. "Tim Gray told me that he has contacted Manny from Juan's excavation to provide one access on the flow diffusers and provide an estimate to replace the tank with an H-20 load-rated tank. The estimate will be given to the owner to see if she wishes to proceed. The board of health allows the owner to take care of the identified issues with the septic prior to transfer of the property." So, I guess it's not an issue right at this moment. And attached is a letter that I believe was already read in from Glenn Harrington, dated, excuse me, January 14th, so it would not have been read in, right?
No.
Okay, it's to Mrs. Eileen Brennan Farrell, 1428 35th Street Northwest, Washington, DC, 20007. Reference 171 Uncle Percy's Road, Mashpee, 02649. Assesses map 117, lot 371. Dear Mrs. Farrell, on December 17th, 2015, a septic inspection was performed by Frank Nunez III, certified septic inspector, at the above-referenced property. The report indicates the septic system needs further evaluation by the local approving authority, as the septic tank, which is situated under the gravel driveway, is H-10 loading. The distribution box was also identified as being H-10 and located under the driveway. The concrete leaching chambers, also known as flow diffusers, were also identified as not having any access covers for proper maintenance or inspection. 310 CMR 15.00, the State Environmental Code Title V. Minimum requirements for the subsurface disposal of sanitary sewage, 15.226, three in parentheses. Construction of septic tanks states, "Any tank installed in a location where there is a potential for vehicles or heavy equipment to pass over it shall be designed to withstand an H-20 loading. You are hereby ordered to comply with the following. One, the septic tank shall either be replaced with an H-20 loading component, or the driveway shall be relocated 10 feet from the septic tank prior to the transfer of property. You shall retain the services of a Mashpee licensed septic installer to obtain a permit from the board of health to perform the work. Should you decide to relocate the driveway as stated, permanent landscaping shall be installed to restrict access over the existing septic tank. Rises shall be installed to allow access to the manholes, per the board of health regulations. Once completed, you shall contact an agent of the board of health to verify compliancy..." Compliance, excuse me. "The flow diffusers have one access manhole with a riser to six inches of grade installed prior to the sale of the property. Failure to comply with the above order will result in your requested attendance at a board of health meeting to show cause as to why you have failed to comply with the order letter. You may be subject to fines or court action. If you have any questions or comments, call our office, 508-539-1426. Cordially, Glenn E. Harrington, Health Agent for the Mashpee Board of Health." Do we have any more?
No, that's it.
I think that is it for comments.
No comments from conservation or from building. No, because it's last time.
Do you have any questions, issues, comments?
None at this time.
Any questions here?
No.
Seems to be saying two things. Number one, it's okay. Number two, they have to replace it because it's not H-20 loaded.
I think what they're saying is...
If they want to sell.
If they change property, if they change property ownership, they have to change it.
Go ahead.
Not until...
Sure.
Yeah, what it kind of boils down to is they had the inspection done, and it had a conditional pass. Condition is that it needs to be either upgraded in the tank, maybe a slab poured over the tank...
Or change the driveway.
Or change the driveway, yep. And then a riser put on at least one of the chambers in the leach field.
It seems to say that you can wait until the property is transferred.
If required to do this, to do this project, it's not required.
Right.
No.
This has kind of been stretched out a little bit beyond what I thought would occur for, you know, a ZVA special permit, because there's supposed to be a referral...
Well, it was a little confusion here with the information we had received before.
Yeah, so there was more than just a board of health comment. It turned out to be a letter informing them that they're sort of out of compliance.
Right.
But you can go ahead with your project, more or less, is what I get out of it.
You're right.
It's been cleared up by the board of health, and I think they've satisfied our concerns.
Great.
Yeah, we receive comments from every board, and if there's questions, that, of course, rings a bell, so we need to make sure before we proceed, and that was a little ambiguous. Anybody in the audience have any questions or comments they'd like to make? Seeing none, Bill, would you like to make a motion on the first?
Sure. Make a motion that we approve 171 Uncle Percy Road, owner Eileen B. Farrell's request for a written finding under Section 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for the extension of two bedrooms on the second floor, an extension of the kitchen/dining area on the first floor of a single-family dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 117 parcel 371 Mashpee, Mass. And this is conditioned on the following. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Massachusetts law, general law, 40A, Section 6. Second, it's conditioned on the BSS design plot plan titled, "Proposed additions prepared for Eileen Brennan Farrell, 171 Uncle Percy's Road, Mashpee, Massachusetts. Scale is 1 inch equals 20 feet. Date, November 25th, 2015, drawn by EJP TJB, job number 15027. Revisions, changed trees to be removed, added brush area, November 30th, 2015. TJB drawing number B 23-19. Also, plans for the Farrell House, 171 Uncle Percy's Drive, New Seabury, Mashpee, Mass, submitted by Registered Architect in Massachusetts and New Jersey, DDB Denise Dambrosi Bonoli, ALA PO Box 991469, Acapescot Road, East Falmouth, Mass. 02536. First floor plan, scheme 5C. Proposed second floor plan, scheme 5. Front elevation, scheme 5C. Back elevation, scheme 5C. Proposed southwest elevation, scheme 5C. Proposed northeast elevation, scheme 5C. 1/4 inch equals 1 foot."
That do it?
I believe so.
One second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, let's go on to the next one.
Great, thank you.
Hold on. Let's do the second part.
If I sit down, I just...
Go right ahead.
Recently got a knee done.
No problem. Make a motion that we approve 171 Uncle Percy's Road, owner Eileen B. Farrell's request for a written finding under Section 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to determine if the extension of two bedrooms on the second floor and the extension of a kitchen/dining area on the first floor of a single-family dwelling is set back at least 50 feet, 50 feet from any water or wetlands as defined by MGL, Chapter 131, Section 40, on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 117 parcel 371 Mashpee, Mass. And it is conditioned on all... Do you want me to read all these in again?
It's all the same?
They're all the same.
Okay.
The same conditions as applied on the first written finding.
Okay. Do we need to say anything about parking?
I know, because it's covered by, it's covered by, it meets all the, it meets all the conditions of a written finding. Those are included in that.
Okay, do we have a second?
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, you're all set. Thank you. Okay. Time for an ink stamp. Thanks, boss. Please. Sure, whatever you want.
Just going to need a couple of days to stand. You got what you need to stamp, Joe?
I need one more, the big boy.
The big one?
Yeah. Brad, I'll have you set on this one. Jim, you got this one off. Brad's going to step in.
That's nice, thank you.
Okay, Jim, if you'd read the first new hearing.
Me or Brad?
I'm going to have you read it.
Okay. New hearings. 120 Somerset Road. Owners James I. and Ellen B. Goodman request a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a single-family dwelling on the property located in an R3 zoning district. Parentheses, map 105 parcel 52, close parentheses, Mashpee, Massachusetts.
Hi.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Kieran Healy. I'm a land surveyor with the BSC Group based in Yarmouth. I'm here tonight representing the owners of the property, Mrs. Goodman. What we are looking to do is do a raise and replace, and we're looking for a written finding under 174-17. We are looking to remove the existing structure and replace with a completely new structure. What we have done is we've tried to increase the setbacks on all sides to make it less nonconforming than it currently is. By doing so, we've decreased the nonconformities, but we have not been able to conform completely with the town of Mashpee regulations. So, we are less than the current required setbacks, but we are greater than the existing conditions about there. So, if I could point your attention just for a moment to the sketch, maybe I could help with a few areas like this. On the plan right here, the existing house, for those of you who've been out to the side will recognize that it's twisted and an angle. It's funny in that it's pointed towards the street as opposed to parallel to the street. So, the existing garage is only a couple of feet away from the street property line. What we're looking to do is what I've got shown here in the tan color is the new building. So, we're going to be going from three feet away from the street here, all the way back to this section right here. And you should have, each of you, one of you should have a copy, 11 by 17, of our zoning setbacks to show the improvements that we're making. The existing street setback, we've got 3.6 feet. We're increasing that to 21.2 feet. A large increase in the setback to the street, but it still doesn't comply with the zoning regulations of 40 feet. So, on the side, on the north setback, we have an existing setback of 10.2. We are proposing 10.5, increasing slightly, but again, that doesn't meet the 15-foot required by the town either. On the south side, we are looking to increase the setback from 5.8 to 8.4. And on the rear, the west side, we're looking to increase the setback from 29.5 to 42.8. Right now, the current deck area is over the top of the coastal bank, and it is closer to the wetlands. We're proposing some patio area on the back. We're not proposing any structure in that area other than patio. We have been to the Conservation Commission, and we do have an order of conditions issued. We also have submitted the plans to the board of health, and we do have those plans approved by Glenn Harrington from the board of health. Other than that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have about this project.
So, you're decreasing all the nonconformities, is that correct?
That is correct.
I'm glad to see you're pulling it away from the street.
Yes, quite a difference. You can see that garage out there is so close to the street.
I thought it was on the street.
Yeah. And on that sketch I gave...
No, I noticed you have a walkway going down to the water, like, looks like stairs and then a ramp and then a float, but I do not see that on your request. So, you're not looking to get that approved right now, are you?
If there's a room up there... We were, we are going to, we've got approval from the Conservation Commission. I was unaware that the stairs down to the, there was an existing license for this property.
Okay, the stairs are already there.
The stairs are not there. There's a license for the float and the fixed pier that's in the water, and when we talked to Conservation Commission, they recommended that we put in a stairway to make it safer. For those of you who've gone to the back, you might have seen, there's actually a rope that people use as a guide to go up and down the hill.
Yes.
And that's just not safe. So, Conservation Commission asked us to put in something, you know, to make it easier to access. I was unaware that those stairs needed additional...
Well, it has to be on the request. Not that, and I agree with you, but it's got to be, am I wrong in this?
Well, what the deal is, someone came in my office today, and they were talking about these stairs and the deck and the ramp, and I says, "Wait a minute, according to the bylaws, you know, it's going to come before this committee." And I told the gentleman, I said, "The only conversation this office has had with anyone was specifically on the house. This whole darker ramp, that's all new. When you add up the length, it's over 100 feet. Anything that's 70 feet or more, it's a special permit to this board."
That's right.
It was, it was my understanding that anything that was 70 feet or more from the mean higher watermark out was a special permit to the board.
Well, that's going to be a discussion you have to have with the board, because what was brought before me, as far as I can tell at that time, you're looking at a special permit from this board.
Yeah. If it was on this, we could act on it.
We don't have-
I guess the closest you would see would be the DDCA second, it's called, if you have a-
Cross-sections?
No, it's not cross-section. It's, it just shows the second floor with no access to that particular area. There's no stairway up there, and if you look at the elevations that you have-
Yeah.
-really isn't any space. It's really ornamental.
Okay.
There's no-
Just make that as a condition.
You can't have-
Yeah.
You can see that the top of the cupola is 39, 1 and 7/8, but you can see the roof line says 33, 7 and 3/4, top of the ridge.
Those numbers are different on the site plan. I was just looking at that in the site plan, all those numbers are different. Not that nothing really matters on this. They're gonna have to have a note.
Which ones are correct? Site plan?
The building, the ridge, would be from the architectural plan. If you notice under, just to come back to the cupola, if you notice, the architect has put this with 35 square feet of uninhabitable space.
I see that. That's good.
If there's any intent to finish that area and make it a ridge space.
I've got that in my condition. Okay, when I read that.
I'm just double-checking because it's been an issue in the past.
Yeah.
No lights. I'm sorry?
And no lights.
Yeah, no beacons.
Yeah, no beacons.
Someone came in wanting to do a beacon, wanting to do a lighthouse.
I don't believe, I don't believe my client wants to do that.
Yeah, well, stuff happens.
I think the neighbors appreciate it.
You'd be surprised what happens after we rule.
Yes.
Okay. So what is the, what is the top of the ridge? Do you find that, Scott?
On the plans, it says 33 and 7 and 3/4.
Right. And what is it really?
Well, that's according, according to the-
You said it was different.
It's different on the site plan. The site plan says-
The site plan says 34.1 feet. So there's a difference of five inches between the two.
Building height 34.1, yeah. Cupola height 40.1.
The reason for the difference is that the architect and myself calculated the average existing grade differently by five inches. That's the reason.
Well, I'm gonna go by you, being the engineer, as the, before I go by her, what the average grade's gonna be, because the other one's gonna stamp it and say, this is what the average grade is.
These were based on my calculations.
Yeah. I'm listening to him.
We're still, we're still 11 inches below the maximum.
So do we, I would assume we need to get something corrected on this and submitted?
Or you can just make it as part of your condition that this is the number, boom.
That number, they're gonna do a, they have to do a field calculation once this house is built. That number could change.
We're gonna sign this off, though.
Yeah.
And it's got a different number than this one. That's what I'm concerned about. Not what the number is.
Which one are we approving?
The problem is, they don't agree.
I think we should approve the site plan calculations, because the engineer came up with those numbers.
Okay, but we want to approve this, and it's not accurate.
Would be possible to approve that subject to those being modified to reflect the engineering plans.
Can you bring another one back, and I'll sign off on it? An updated one? Just updated numbers?
But can you just bring it to my office?
Sure.
There you go.
Absolutely.
I'd be glad to do so.
Bring it in end of the week or whatever.
He's gonna come see me anyway.
Tell me soon, tell me soon.
So we'll hold off on signing this, and when we get the new one, we'll sign it. So the numbers match this.
But just reference that, whatever this one here is-
What is that called?
This is DDWE.
Is this a buil-, building plan, right? House plan?
Architectural plans, yes.
Architectural house plan.
No, this is, I've only got two that I'm referring to. House plan?
That would be the house plan, yes.
Yeah.
So we're gonna hold off on signing off on that one.
Updated.
Till the updated one comes in.
Can you make notations on the, on that?
No. I'd prefer you-
How do you know it didn't get doctored?
Right.
Pardon me?
Hide the pun. How do you know it didn't get doctored later? I know, but in the pun.
Okay, I'm gonna condition this on an updated house plan.
Right.
It was easy.
Coming in. Can you have it in by Friday?
I could, but I'm not drawing it, so I can't say that for sure.
To come, then.
I will get it done soon.
Condition on an updated house plan.
Perfect.
Well, you said 20 days. Because it's a 20-day appeal period.
Yep. Any other questions, concerns? Anybody in the audience? Seeing none? Bill, would you-
All, all the-
Come right up.
We got a winner.
Who are you? Your name and address for the-
My name is Paul Train, 1 Beacon Street, Boston. I'm here representing my favorite client, myself, is the homeowner next door at 124 Summer C Road. I had a quick chance today to look at the plans on record and took a look at some of the plans that were submitted to the Conservation Commission. There's some discrepancies between the two. First of all, I want to say, this house has been uninhabited, the existing house, for 10 years. I was here 14 months ago as an applicant, built the house, new house, next door, so it's certainly gonna be an improvement.
Yeah.
So on the north side of the house, which is adjacent to our house, is my main concern, naturally. On the, on at least one of the plans, it shows a hot tub directly on the property line on the north side of the house. And, you know, I want to make sure that any hot tub that's part of an approved plan meets, meets, sits, at least at the setback, though. The setback on the north side is 10 and 1/2 feet, it should be a 10.
I know the calculations are on there with the lock. I don't remember seeing the actual hot tub.
It's further away than the house.
Oh, right there. Yeah. Did you see it on the plan, where it is?
If I could answer that, we filed originally with the Conservation Commission. We had the hot tub on the side of the building near this gentleman's house. The Conservation Commission wanted us to pull that in and move it into this area.
Yep.
The back of the house originally, we had it in this area. So it was part of the conservation requirement was that we move it away from your property line. It's now-
It's, yeah, it's farther away than the house is.
It's now in over here, it's away from this section, which the Conservation Commission would not allow us to do, so it's over in this area now.
So what's that distance?
Possibly 14 feet.
So you can always put it as part of the condition that hot tub could be no closer to 14 feet from-
It's already shown.
No, 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 but I'm just saying because-
Yeah, but there's no calculation.
Yeah, but somebody's asking.
The house is 10.5.
Yeah. You follow what I'm saying? You can put it as part of the condition, a hot tub could be no closer to 14 feet from-
It's already shown.
No, 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 but I'm just saying because-
Yeah, but there's no calculation.
Yeah, but somebody's asking.
The house is 10.5.
Yeah. You follow what I'm saying? You can put it as part of the condition, a hot tub could be no closer to 14 feet from whatever-
Well, we're signing this off anyway.
Right. No, I'm just saying. I mean, we've got somebody's got a concern. It's your call. This is a suggestion.
I don't have a problem with that. Anybody have a problem with that?
No.
If, if they don't, the homeowner doesn't have a problem with that's where it's gonna go, then that's where it's gonna go.
We'll say 14 feet.
Correct, and the homeowners are aware of the conservation requirement.
Okay. Perfect.
The other issue is, I'm just wondering, because again, it doesn't really show well on the plans. There's a, there's a proposal on the plans to include a second-floor porch on the north, ranging towards the north side of the house. I just want to make sure that that's not gonna be a wraparound porch that faces water and not wraparound.
It appears it's just on the rear of the house. It looks like it's cantilevered. Once again, I don't have a floor plan, so I can't tell you how far out it goes. It's right here.
Okay, that's obviously the south side.
You've got the north, the north elevation, D D N E.
Got it.
D D N E. But it's, it looks like-
It's not overhanging the houses.
It looks like it steps in. It looks like it's, it's mounted on top of, it's mounted on top of this structure here, and I can see a line here, because there's no way it can't, can't leave it that far. This section here looks like it steps in, but-
It is over possible living area in that inside area.
But then there's a cantilever part, but-
On the north side, this would be facing, there's nothing that wraps around the porch that gets-
It doesn't wrap around. It's all, it's all extending out.
You're gonna speak into the mic if you're gonna speak.
Sorry, if you look on this plan, this is from, facing from the border to the north, looking in, you can see that there's no wraparound porch, which I think is your concern in this area right here. It faces the water. Porch is-
But if you put a wraparound porch there, then it's, once again, it's going into the setback.
Correct.
So it'll open up another-
Yeah. If it was cantilevered, though, how would that?
That's-
It's still by the structure.
Because this is cantilevered.
It's still by the structure.
This part's cantilevered, so we're not including that in the lot coverage, though.
No.
I'm not talking about lot coverage, I'm talking about setbacks.
Okay. Okay.
You follow what I'm saying?
Yeah. So you can't have the cantilever in the-
Yeah.
Okay. Well, it's all on the rear.
You know, the last issue I'll raise is, obviously, having just completed the house and spent about $100,000 on landscaping, there's a, there's a deteriorated fence that we had brought back up and made sturdy when, when, when we did our construction. And there's a lot of, obviously, new landscaping, you know, sprinkler system and other, other materials there, that we want to make sure is protected, so, you know, potentially a requirement that they maintain some type of fence on that side during the construction period, so it doesn't get ruined.
I don't know if that falls under us.
That doesn't fall under-
That's gonna have to be between you and the builder, to talk to the homeowner and the builder, to play nice, basically, and if they don't, then you have a right to call the building department and say, hey, they're, they're overstepping their bounds.
Okay, and the dimensional requirements, that's a building inspector's call as well, is that right? The dimensional requirements, is that the building inspector's call?
Dimensional requirements is the guy-
Lot coverage? The size of the house?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's this board.
Yeah, that's this board, yeah.
I didn't see anywhere. What's the size of the house?
Yeah, it's all here.
Well, the footprint is less than it was.
Yeah, I understand.
So the lot coverage is less, which is the key to the law.
I don't know if the actual square footage of the house is on here.
It is, well, I might reduce it.
I know the lot coverage is.
What was the previous lot coverage? What's the proposed?
The existing lot coverage was 2,893.
No lot coverage. Percent?
The percentage was 34.9%.
How much?
34.9%.
Okay, and proposed?
What is proposed?
27.
27.7.
So it's less.
Reducing it to the building itself is 2297.
Correct.
Yeah, the footprint is 2297.
And that just, that includes?
2347 with the hot tub.
See, that's, that's what we are in charge of, lot coverage and setbacks and special permits.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right.
We get any other comments from other departments?
Any other comments from anybody up there?
We have an inspections comment. We have a Conservation comment.
There you have it.
Good, good point, yeah. All right. Inspections Department. 120 Summer C Road. The area is zoned R3 and is in a pre-contact, archaeologically sensitive area. Listed as, as part in both the high sensitivity and moderate sensitivity area. The applicant is seeking a written finding under Article 5, 174-17 to tear down or replace an existing home, and the board has to make the determination this, replace this home would increase the non-conforming nature. So in doing some digging, if you run into anything in the archaeological way, stop and call the state. Let's see what else we have.
Conservation, no comment.
Conservation, yeah. Said the project was approved by the Conservation Commission. No issues.
That's all done.
Anything on Border Health?
Yeah.
Oh, there is?
All right. Border Health says the septic and floor plans have been reviewed and approved.
They saw the floor plans.
Anything from fire? No? I think that is it. Do you guys agree? Cover them all?
I believe you did.
All right, Bill, would you like to make a motion?
Sure.
I make a motion that we approve 120 Summer C Road, owner James L. and Ellen B. Goodman's request for a written finding under Section 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a single-family dwelling on property located in a, in an R3 zoning district, map 105, parcel 52, Mashpee, Mass. And this is conditioned on the following. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass General Law 40A, Section 6. It is also conditioned on a plan of land signed by Craig A. Field, professional surveyor, date 12/22/15, number 120, Summer C Road, Mashpee, Mass. Proposed conditions, December 22, 2015, revision, none issued for permitting, not construction, prepared for James and Ellen Goodman, 46, White Oak Lane, Sudbury, Mass., 01776, BSC Group 349, Route 28, Unit D, West Yarmouth, Mass., 02673, telephone number 508-778-8919, scale 1 inch equals 10 feet, file 9959-SP-2.DWG, DWG number 6317-01, job number 4-9959.00, sheet 1 of 1. Also conditioned on house plans.
The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass General Law forty A, Section Six. It is also conditioned on a plan of land signed by Craig A. Field, professional surveyor, date twelve twenty-two fifteen, number one twenty, Summer Sea Road, Mashpee, Mass. Proposed conditions, December twenty-second, two thousand fifteen, revision, none issued for permitting, not construction. Prepared for James and Ellen Goodman, forty-six, White Oak Lane, Sudbury, Mass., zero one seven seven six, BSC Group three forty-nine, Route twenty-eight, Unit D, West Yarmouth, Mass., zero two six seven three, telephone number five zero eight, seven seven eight, eight nine one nine, scale one inch equals ten feet. File nine nine five nine dash S P dash two dot D W G, D W G, number six three one seven dash zero one, job number four dash nine nine five nine dot zero zero, sheet one of one. Also conditioned on house plans. Client Goodman residence, one twenty Summer Sea Road, Mashpee, Mass., zero two six four nine, scale one-eighth inch equals one foot. Title, design development client approved. First floor plan, date December fifteenth, two thousand fifteen. Michael A. Jimmerson, A L A, Architecture and Interior, one ninety-three Horseshoe Lane, Centerville, Mass., zero two six three two, telephone five zero eight, seven seven five four two six four, D D C A first, D D C A second, and D D C A basement. Also conditioned that the hot tub, that the proposed hot tub will be located no closer than fourteen feet from the northerly lot line. Also conditioned that the proposed cupola will not be habitable space. And also conditioned on an updated house plan to be provided to the Buildings Department.
Yeah, no light too.
And no beacons or lights or anything like that.
Okay, do I have a second?
No second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye. Nice job.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members.
Thank you.
I think I'm crazy tonight. The architects might take a fast turn.
Did all three pages seem like? Sorry.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
I should say... I keep believing my phone rang. Need another set, please? The stamp?
You're going to have a whole bunch of stuff.
Okay. Do you want me to sign this and pass it down?
This gets down to you or whoever.
Those plans, right?
Yeah, those you don't touch.
All of them? They're all house plans?
Yeah.
Scott, you got a good signature there.
Black on my signature.
Johnson, Michael, design, Glen Petrie's house. Really?
Yep.
My hand hurts.
I know the feeling.
That's it. Excellent.
You go.
All right, we all set, are we?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Jim, if you could read the next two new hearings.
One eighty-four Monomoskoy Road. Owner John Foley requests a written finding under one seventy-four dash seventeen of the zoning bylaws requesting permission to extend a dock, pier, ramp, and float across an abutting property located at Zero Bay Road, map one one four, parcel forty-four, in an R3 zoning district, map one one four, parcel forty A, in Mashpee, Massachusetts. Again, one eighty-four Monomoskoy Road. Owner John Foley requests a special permit under one seventy-four dash twenty-five point one or I.
Aye.
Nine of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a dock, pier, ramp, and float extending more than seventy feet of coastal beach, coastal bank, salt marsh, or bordering vegetated wetlands on property located in an R3 zoning district, map one one four, parcel forty-eight, Mashpee, Massachusetts.
Aye.
Aye. Good evening again. I'm Jeff Reither with BSS Design, representing John Foley tonight at one eighty-four Monomoskoy Road in Mashpee. His existing dwelling is here on a really small lot. It's map one forty, one fourteen, block forty A. He has approached us to permit a dock into the waters of Great River. There's a large salt marsh parcel out in front of his lot, and I'm going to turn the plan around here so you can see the abutters. This is from the town GIS, by the way. This is land owned by Robert DeLory, and it goes across one eighty-four Monomoskoy. And we have gotten a letter from the abutter, and the owner, he has a house nearby, to allow that. It might be in your file there. It's notarized. So anyway, Mr. DeLory has allowed John Foley to propose this crossing to Great River. And unfortunate part is, the salt marsh parcel is more than seventy feet. There's numbers here on the top of the page, one hundred and thirteen feet across salt marsh. That's the fixed portion of the dock. And then there's fifty-eight feet across the waterway out to the end of the float. I'm going to pass a picture around. I have a couple of these, so for some reason they didn't plot out. Both the same. This is a picture of a recently installed, what they call a ten A float, and a ramp off of a fixed dock. And that is just around the corner in Jehu Pond. But the reason I gave you that is, that's the type of dock we're proposing here. Unfortunately, we can't put pile-supported docks in this part of the Great River because it's in an ACEC up to the mean low waterline. And so that is defined here as this blue line on my plan, and it's also sort of hatched on your plans there. So what we have is a dock that extends down to the end of the marsh, then transitions into the, quote, this is an Army Corps designation, a Section ten A float approved by the harbor master. And John Foley has gotten a verbal approval, but nothing in writing yet from the harbor master. I guess we have to take this one step at a time before we get an approval. So again, we're crossing the one hundred and thirteen feet of salt marsh, fifty-eight feet. It's both in the plan and cross-section or the profile view on the plan. Also, at the high watermark right here, we provide the lateral access required by DEP. And we also are bringing that down in elevation, so that works best with the ramp and the float. Now, these Section ten As, if it matters, they're bottom anchored, so there's no pilings, no pipes supporting the float. They'll be bottom anchored there. If you look at the photographs, you'll see that there's chain hanging off the front of the float. It's also off the rear of the float, and those are cross-chained into bottom anchors. So if you haven't seen one of these ten As, there it is. Jehu Pond's got about twenty-five of them. I think I counted the other day. So we're just trying to mimic that because, again, DEP won't allow us to put in a pile-supported dock into the waterway. Otherwise, I'd bring it out to about here, you know, with a smaller ramp. You saw the scale of that ramp. It's pretty impressive, that big arc and ramp. Anyway, so that's the special permit request, I guess, in a nutshell, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Do we have a legal right-of-way across somebody else's property?
No, it doesn't have an easement agreement yet.
Excuse me?
It does not have an easement agreement yet.
That's what I want to see.
You want to see that?
What would happen if you saw it?
No, it'll be an easement agreement.
See what I'm saying? Mr. What's his name? DeLory?
I'm DeLory. Robert DeLory.
Yeah, what would happen if you saw it? What happens if you get in an argument?
Oh, no, there is an easement agreement on it.
I think that's be conditioned on that. I know they've done similar things in New Seabury, where New Seabury's owned the property, and people have homes on the other side of it, and they've granted them easements, but that's what was done, a legal easement, to cross over it. I don't know how we can approve it without that easement.
Absolutely.
Do we need the easement? I mean, I'm no lawyer, but I would have to say, I don't know how we can approve it without an easement.
The other thing...
I'd like to... Can I speak here?
Sure.
We have all the intention to have an easement across there, and Mr. DeLory's prepared a letter saying such. But we thought we'd come here and get your opinion and your approval, hopefully, and then take that next step for an easement.
We wouldn't approve it until it was approved by Conservation anyway. That's probably why you shouldn't want first.
I did have plans with them in December. You got comments?
Well, I have comments I'll read from Conservation. Before I get into that, a dock is considered an accessory use. So the definition, right in the zoning book, accessory use, a use incident and subordinate to and on the same lot as a principal use. Principal use is a house. Does this lot have a house?
Well, you want to point out something?
No, I'm talking about...
The dock starts on his property, Mr. Foley's property.
Yeah, but it's going across.
Can I just say?
It's going across a lot.
The lot ends about at this point at the marsh where you see in green. So there is a portion of this on the Foley lot. And then we'll need that easement across.
But the question is, in the green section, that's a lot.
It is a lot.
And according to this, it's got to have a principal use before it can have an accessory use.
Well, I mean, the intent here is to have the dock start on that, get an easement across.
Well, I understand what you're saying. I didn't make the rule. It's a bylaw.
It's been done before.
Yeah.
So that's up to some of the lawyers to figure that out, but I know it's been done before.
As long as it starts on the...
Yeah, I think it has to start on Mr. Foley's property.
Well, I don't know that.
Well, that's not our...
Yeah.
We're not... That's above our pay scale.
All right. So let's go to Conservation comments. Says, "The commission has not reviewed this project yet. Mr. Foley would only be applying for the fixed pier portion of this project before the commission, as the water body fronting his home is designated as an area of critical environmental concern by the state. What this means is that there can be no permanent structures placed below mean high water. Mr. Foley would need to apply for a ten A float license from the Mashpee Harbor Master. From what I've heard, there is currently a waiting list for ten A floats. If he were to get a ten A float from the harbor master and a permit from the Conservation Commission for a fixed pier terminating at mean high water, he could connect the two with an aluminum ramp. The ten A float and the ramp should not be shown on any plan that is submitted to the Conservation Commission, as we have no jurisdiction over ten A floats." "As an aside, ten A floats are bottom anchored only and cannot, under any circumstances, be supported by piles, wood, metal, or other. Additionally, these floats must be removed from the water seasonally, and they cannot be dragged over any wetland resource for the purposes of upland storage. Any upland storage of the float must be described via written notification to the commission as to the area of storage and methodology of removal and placement." This is from the acting harbor master. Okay. From John J. Santangelo. Mary Ann Romero.
Santangelo?
S A N.
Yeah.
T A N.
Yes.
G E L O.
Okay, thank you.
He's a lieutenant on the police department.
He's in the police department, so if you wanted to contact him, just contact him.
So he's the acting harbor master. Mary Ann, in regards to one eighty-four Monomoskoy Road request for a ramp and slash or pier across marshlands, the acting harbor master, Richard Santangelo, is not approving any ten A floats in the ACEC area. He's going to let the new harbor master make those decisions when he slash she is hired. I looked at a map, and it does not appear that the proposed pier across the marsh would be a hazard to navigation. Signed Lieutenant John Santangelo. Okay, this is from the Inspections Department.
Excuse me, sir?
Sure.
Could you just back up just a minute and read the last sentence?
Sure. "I looked at a map, and it does not appear that the proposed pier across the marsh would be a hazard to navigation."
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. This is dated January twenty-seventh from the Inspections Department. One eighty-four Monomoskoy Road. The area is zoned R3 and is in the pre-contact archaeologically sensitive area listed as high sensitivity. The applicant is seeking a written finding under Article Five, one seventy-four seventeen, regarding the determination from the board if the construction of a structure, a boat ramp, across the abutting property lot, which does not have a principal structure, would be considered a permitted use. Currently, the zoning bylaw for the town of Mashpee does not address this sort of use. Thus, this department does not support such situations within the town of Mashpee. Also noted, it says the, well, it must be for the second...
It is.
...section. In other words, the written finding number two. The area is zoned R3 and is in the pre-contact archaeological sensitive area listed as high sensitivity. The applicant is seeking a special permit under one seventy-four twenty-five I dash nine regarding the construction of a dock, pier, ramp, and float extending more than seventy feet of coastal beach, coastal bank, salt marsh, marsh, or bordering vegetated wetlands." Border Health, no comment on these. And this is from, it's a letter submitted. "I, Robert R. DeLory, Jr., give BSS Design permission to traverse my marsh and upland of Lot forty-four on map one fourteen, Mashpee, Mass., for measurement of the possibility of a single-family dock easement for Jack Foley of Lot forty A, map one fourteen, Mashpee, Mass., signed by Robert R. DeLory, Jr." It's notarized Marilyn Candell. Notary published. Let's see, State of Mass., County Constable, sworn to before me this fourth day of January two thousand sixteen. Signed Marilyn Candell. And it's got the attached map, which we've already talked about. So first thing I would want to do is, I'd want to get something in writing that would be legal. In other words, a legal right-of-way or an easement. Next thing I want to do is talk to the town attorney regarding all of this, and I also want to hear from Conservation.
Yes, sir.
So you need to get to Conservation and get the easement.
And the harbor master, John.
And get the harbor master. Thank you.
Let me try. I did send from the letter, it's here dated, I'm surprised it's not in the file, December tenth. I did see you with the plan, I'm going to say you, the board. And this was...
I can read it in if you'd like.
Sure. I'm sending the copy I have.
Do you want to make a photocopy of it?
Yeah.
All right. This is December tenth from BSS Design to Andrew McManus, Mashpee Conservation Commission, sixteen Great Neck Road, Mashpee, Mass. Reference, proposed dock onto Great River, one eighty-four Monomoskoy Road, Mashpee. Dear Drew, enclosed, please find a copy of the park plan for the proposed dock at the subject project. Also enclosed is a handwritten letter from the owner of map one fourteen, block forty-four dash zero, Robert DeLory. Also enclosed is a handwritten letter from the owner of Map 114 Block 44-0, Robert Delory, allowing permission for my client, John Foley, to cross the salt marsh with the fixed pier for access to Great River. This plan has also been filed with the Zoning Board of Appeals for a dock longer than 70 linear feet crossing coastal wetlands as defined in Mass. General Law, Chapter 131, Section 40. BSS Design, Inc., will be filing this project under a notice of intent, but wanted to obtain permission from the Zoning Board of Appeals first because of the unique situation with the marsh crossing. The dock design allows for five-foot lateral access under the dock at the mean-high water line. The dock also meets the Army Corps of Engineers' design standards for dock height above vegetated Knows, probably known as the one...
It's the 10A.
One colon one rule. The four-foot wide dock will be a minimum of four foot clear above the salt marsh at the end of the dock at the proposed ramp. Lastly, the dock includes a bottom anchored float, because the ramp on the float will be licensed under 10A if approved by the harbor master, Waterways Commission, Shellfish Warden, and Conservation Commission. Please send your positive comments and referrals to the ZBA as required. If you have any questions, please write a call. My email address is such-and-such-and-touch. And signed, Jeff Reither?
Reither.
Reither. Thank you.
As you can see, I'm trying to do the right thing here, you know?
I hear you.
Trying to cover all the bases, but, you know, this is an oddball, and you know it, and we're all going to struggle with this one.
Okay.
I did want to give you a copy of the Waquay Bay AC-EC boundary description, because Drew has a typo in his comments, and he says that the AC-EC goes to the high-water mark. Thank you very much.
Sure.
But in fact, in this location, the AC-EC goes up to the low-water mark as described in that long-winded AC-EC description. So I don't expect you to read it all, but there is a section there, and I show you a part of the map that accompanies that description. Anyway, the AC-EC goes to this line here and not way up to here. Just saying that.
Which line?
Is this the one you've highlighted on page two?
Yeah, that's the description of this area where I've highlighted on page two.
It says MLW, the following, and following the MLW line northward to the boundary between Monomus Gori Island and the adjacent northerly salt marsh. Is that what you're talking about?
Right, that MLW is the mean-low water and not mean-high, so just clarify. It's something I brought in just in case you were concerned about that one.
Now, we will send a copy of this to Drew.
Yeah, thank you.
To get his confirmation on it. I'd actually, again, I want to review this with town council once you get the appropriate easement.
You want to get the easement first?
Well, I want the easement, and I want Conservation.
Do you want to make a copy of that? You need that back? Was that our copy?
No, that's your copy.
All right, so we'll probably have to get that to Drew.
Yeah, we need, definitely get that to Drew.
And it's highlighted, so he knows he's not looking for it?
Yeah, second page there.
There's a highlight, then there's a highlight on the map itself.
On the last page, right?
Right, on the last page.
So I don't know how long this will take. I don't want to keep continuing it for you.
This is, let me drop here, because if I ask the town attorney to draw up an easement, then I'm looking at probably six weeks anyway.
Yeah, I'm going to see the, we're going to see the town attorney first week in February, and this is on the docket to talk to him about. If you can send an email to Mary Ann with exactly what you're going to do, I will review that email with the town attorney, with what your proposals are.
Oh, is this...
Mary Ann.
Here?
Yeah. So we'd want to, yeah, what your plan is? Get the easement. And, you know, I don't know, I don't know how you make it all legal. I assume it's got to be signed off and registered, I guess.
Yeah.
That's something for the attorneys. I'm not sure.
On that marsh. I think you'd register the, the county's deeds.
I did an easement with another one.
Well, there is a dock here. Let me just look it up. Are you referring to this one here?
I saw that dock.
No, it's the next one over.
Yeah.
Because that one does cross.
Yeah, that's it, 196.
That does cross that lot.
I don't know where that came from. I never approved it, as far as I know.
So I guess it has been done, hopefully.
Yeah, how did that one get there?
There was an existing dock.
Looks brand-new to me. I saw it today.
No, but when we did the easement, they had a brand-new dock.
So that, so it was just replaced. How long has that dock been there?
Long, the old dock.
Grab the mic if you would, and...
Or just stand, because she's flashing, that's the, no one can hear you.
Yeah, and your name and address, if you would.
George Benaway, and I represent the butter to the east. We're fully supportive of the effort here to complete the project, but this...
Just grab the mic, take it with you.
Which has just been replaced within the last year and a half.
You need to talk into the mic.
Yeah, we're on TV.
Right. This was an old dock that had deteriorated to nothing but rotten pilings, but there was permitting on it that went way back, and they went for permits to rehab, and they rehabbed it. And that was about a year and a half ago, I think.
They got an easement agreement to go across.
Okay.
I just remember that because I've been there forever.
Thank you. So, again, I'm going to see the town attorney first week in February. I'm going to review this, and if you can put together an action plan of what you're planning to do, so we can review all of this with him and get his thoughts on the zoning board permitting something like this. But, you know, again, before you can do anything, the harbor master's going to sign off.
So we need the new harbor master.
Yeah.
And we don't even have one yet.
We don't have it yet.
Do you know any idea when he's coming on?
No idea.
We don't know.
I'm sorry, but I just don't know who to ask.
I know.
Okay, so...
It falls under the police department, so...
We need an easement prepared and a notice of intent approved.
Yeah.
And then come back. I'm going to need a couple months, I think. Well, I don't even know how to, well, first of all, I'm going to continue this for...
Do you want to withdraw it?
No, my applicant asked not to withdraw it. He thought it would be a toughie, but...
Well, you can withdraw it, and then when you're ready, just resubmit.
Yeah. Well, I'd like to continue this first, and then...
What's the statutory limit, Mary Ann?
How many days?
He actually has nine days, so maybe April.
So what's his drop-dead date on that? 90 days from when? Not from tonight, from when he filed?
From, uh, 90 days from the hearing date.
Which would be today.
Today, yes.
So could you clean it up in 90 days?
Well, I don't know. I may, you know, he may say, just withdraw it, and then we'll get the harbor master's approval.
And then you just, and then you resubmit.
But I just don't know if I...
But that was in 90 days. We don't have a harbor master still.
If we don't act on it, it gets automatically approved. If we don't act on it. So we either say yea or nay.
So if there's no harbor master, we just have to make a call on our own?
Yeah, we have to say, sorry, and we deny it.
But they can continue.
Or we approve it.
They can continue for another...
Only up to 90.
Right.
But it just seems, doesn't seem fair that they'd have to be penalized if we don't have a harbor master to make a decision in the 90 days if the town didn't hire one.
What can I say?
My understanding is they're trying to hire somebody.
I would assume before the spring, yeah.
And I may be talking out of turn, but I think they're in the interviewing process.
I can't imagine going to the spring without a harbor master.
That's my point.
Yeah, well, I'm sure everything you said is off the record. We think.
Well, just giving him information to, withdraw, you're not going to be penalized by any time.
So do you want to continue it to a certain date? And then you can, in the meantime, make a decision?
Right.
Yeah, you can withdraw later. In the 90 days, you can withdraw at any time, right?
I guess I need as much as you can give me, because it looks like I have to wait for harbor master that's heated up.
Probably most they can do is 90 days.
If 90 days is going to work, then I'll take that.
Yeah, you can withdraw within the 90 days, right? Yeah, so it amounts to...
But he has to, he's just got to resubmit, and it costs him a filing fee, correct?
Yeah.
What's the filing fee?
More to it not.
$125.
It's $125.
Compared to the cost of that dock.
To redo it.
That dock's going to be more than $125.
Yeah, I mean, that's $125, and the scheme of things is small. So we can continue it to a date. You pick a date. What do we have?
April 13th. April 13th is within the 90 days.
All right, we're going to make a decision on that date. It's either yea and nay.
Right.
Or withdrawal. That's like the drop-dead date.
Are you going to vote yea or nay here?
We have to.
No, no, we're going to vote to continue.
On that night, we're going to continue until the 13th of April. You come back on April 13th. If it's not ready to go, we're going to vote one way or the other. We have to.
Or he withdraws.
I understand. Okay, I'll take April 13th.
Okay.
All right. Bill, would you like to make a motion?
Make a motion that we continue. 184 Monomus Gori Road, owner John Foley's request for a special permit under Section 174-25.I, parentheses, nine of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a dock, pier, ramp, and float extending more than 70 feet of coastal beach, coastal bank, salt marsh, or bordering vegetated wetlands on property located in an R3 zoning district, Map 114 Parcel 40A, Mashpee, Mass. And also to continue till April 13th, 184 Monomus Gori Roads, excuse me, owner John Foley's request for a written finding under Section 174-17 of the zoning bylaws requiring a permission to extend a dock, pier, ramp, and float across a budding property located at Zero Bay Road, Map 114 Parcel 44, in an R3 zoning district, Map 114 Parcel 40A, Mashpee, Mass. Both of being continued to April 13th.
Do I have a second?
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll see you then. And any time in between, if you have a change of mind, just let us know. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And send that email, if you would, to Mary Ann, so I can review it.
On the next steps.
Yeah. Thank you.
I wrote that down.
Thank you. Thank you. Mary Ann, no paperwork to sign, right? All right. What do we have left?
Minutes.
All right. Jim, you want to read the other minutes?
I don't know if I have it with me. Uh, other business. Approved the January 13th, 2016 meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, we make a motion that we do that, and do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, everybody will vote that was here, except Scott. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. All right, Tom, it's your turn.
I made the motion that would be passed.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.